Address this board on anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone who wishes to speak about it and how the agenda is? Okay, thank you. Our first item of this approval of minutes from the June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
I move we approve the minutes for the June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
I'll second it. So we have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Sorry, I'm getting a little feedback. It's sometimes hard to hear.
Oh. Okay, is that better? Okay, we'll just keep moving forward then. Design plans for residential request for new pergola and paint scheme located at two thirty-five East Surkado Lane. And have the staff give us review and then now we can give us additional information.
Yes, thank you Chair. John Frank, City Planner. I'll be making the presentation tonight. Appreciate everybody coming out in the middle of July for the meeting tonight. And Board Member O'Connor for participating telephonically so we could have a forum tonight. So we've got a four applications tonight. This, the first one is over at two thirty-five East Surkado Lane. And the application is for D R B approval for a remodel of the rear yard and a new paint scheme for the house. Here's a dissonant map, so it's the site's located south of Camelback and east of the Litchfield Park, just north of the Wiglong, a couple of blocks. Area photograph, you can see the price marketplace to the north and just to provide some context for the board as well as anybody in the audience. Here's the request. There's a few things that were being asked for. One would be a new pergola roughly seventeen and a half feet by twenty-eight feet by four inch, about four hundred ninety-six square feet. And then new outdoor fireplace and some hardscape improvements. The exterior paint scheme on the house will be consistent with two colors, a crystal haze, which would be applied to the house. And then the ink for gray would be trimmed for. A little bit on the site background, so this is one of our more established neighborhoods. This, the site's in Litchfield Park subdivision number eleven, unit one. The lot itself is about twenty-five thousand square feet and is zone R one. The single family home is around forty-four hundred, almost thirty-five hundred square feet and was constructed in nineteen seventy-two. Colors might be a little washed out. This is a front elevation of an existing home, so the, this is the paint scheme, so you can see the two colors. Seems like it really fits in with Litchfield Park.
Just a question as per any opinions of the block, is it?
Yeah, it's already painted, but they're painting it a lighter color.
Okay, thank you. Really nice layout of the backyard, so the pergola, there's a fire pit that's proposed, a lot of improvements that are planned for the backyard. And there's some of the site details, the design working actually is really nice, nice on the together. This is a perspective of the backyard. You see beyond the pool could be the pergola, a very extensive fireplace. And then on the foreground on the side pool could be the fireplace. Thanks, Michael. Here's some site details, just kind of showing what, what the applicant's proposing. Here's a fire pit detail. A lot of thoughtful time has gone into the backyard. This is the pergola slash fireplace, fire, detached fireplace. If you look in the upper right corner, you see the plan view, apparently it's denigrated and tightened between the pergola as well as the fireplace. This is a cross section of the pergola. You can see the fireplace on the left and photo left corner. And then the upper right is a frontal, the future of the fireplace. Staff inclusion recommendation, we feel like the paint scheme and pergola fireplace, hardscape improvements all one are nicely designed. Like I said before, the design package is really all put together. We feel like it is really appropriate and should be approved of seven, eighteen exhibits presented by the applicant. If that, we can turn back over to the board asking questions or if the applicant wants to go up to the podium and speak.
Any questions for staff? I just want to get some time to be away from the main business, that's the pergola. Hard code issue.
I think it's further than that. I mean, looking at dimensions in the five by six foot, it's at least eleven foot to this point here and then another like probably five meters, about fifteen.
And then the other question, I'll introduce yourself.
Yes.
There's the microphone.
I want this part. Hi, I'm Kami Schacher and I'm representing the client. Who lives at this address? So yes, it's, it looks to be roughly, I don't know. Is that a seam anywhere through the house or something?
That's fine. I just want to make sure it's at least a head. And then in order to qualify it's a accessory structure. And then, should I have this, the slope looks like it's going back towards the fireplace?
No, it's sloped back towards that pitch. And it doesn't, what it does really show is distortion there, which is the recline extent over top of this. So they'd like to kind of pass that recline. Well, actually even there, it doesn't show it, I guess, on the top of the either.
I mentioned you're still crickety around.
Yeah.
But it's the same for me, it's almost about, especially if you're having a TV or something, very maybe about.
Yeah, no other issues. Some of those details will be corrected too when we get construction docs drawn up. So we'll have those proofed as well, but we'll look into extending that past that fireplace.
Any questions? What are your comment? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, sorry, I do have a question. I guess this is probably for, for John. It is, I guess I'm, if, if this is, I think the pergola, it looks like it's within the five hundred square feet maximum. The paint colors are something that the city would already approve. Is, is there a piece, I'm not understanding, is there a piece of this that's added to the norm that wouldn't have been able to be approved at administration level?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Board Member O'Connor, thanks for the question. Not really. This is typical of what we would expect, what would require the year of the approval.
Naturally, the parameters of just staff approval are, I know for small patio additions and something like that. But I'm not sure where you'd consider your parameters of staff approval.
To the Chair, for this, I've given the pergola was just touching that, just below the five hundred square feet. You felt approved into bringing it forward just due to John's assignment.
Any other questions for staff or for the applicant? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve. The request for new pergola paint scheme, two thirty-five East Surkado Lane, as recommended by staff, subject to all the exhibits.
Motion? A second, Brian?
Yes, I'll second. I didn't exactly hear, but I'm assuming that's to approve it.
Okay, a motion to approve. And a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Next up, design plans, residential request for carport conversion to a new garage located at two eighty-four South Ascot Circle.
Thank you, Chair. This is a, another improvement request. So we have a existing carport attached to an existing home. And the owner would like to convert the carport into a two-car garage and actually expand now the space that would normally be devoted to the carport. Actually make that larger for the carport. We'll show you some plans here in a moment. Here's a dissonant map, so the site max, the lot max on the New School Road. And the site itself is west of that circle. Here's an aerial photo, so an existing home, there's a pool, swimming pool in the backyard and you can see New School Road in the south. It's on the cul-de-sac. The front elevation, the house itself is in the middle there, you can see the carport and there are two vehicles under the carport. As I said, the project would be to convert the carport into a two-car garage. And the garage itself would connect in, obviously the existing home. And a nice design detail that we do a lot of credit for to the applicant is they're bringing the roofline of the new garage in line with the front lane of a portion of the living area of the home. We'll show you that in just a moment. Little bit of background, so again, one of our older established neighborhoods, Litchfield Park, is part of Litchfield Park subdivision number fifteen dash eight. The lot here is about ten thousand square feet and is zone R one eight. The house itself, single story, about seventeen hundred square feet and was constructed around nineteen seventy. Little detail that we wanted to make the board aware of, because we had conversations with the board adjustment on other applications is that since the house was built pre-nineteen eighty-seven, Litchfield Park incorporated in the city. The setback can be enjoyed with what the prior setbacks were when the site was developed. So in this case, it would be seven feet. So no bearings necessary for the proposed improvements. Here's a site plan, maybe a little bit harder to read. I tried to blow it up a little bit more. So the improvements itself would be on the left side of the, of the diagram.
Same question. So the existing is seven, but the front corner of the existing sits at seven. If you're extending out, it's going to get into closer than seven, but seven may start, is that clear on the drawing?
No. Can I answer it?
Yeah, are you that prepared?
Yeah.
Give your name and.
I'm Jim Pidgen, I'm the advocate on the deal. On the right-hand side of that drawing is the existing house, seven feet. Where it's pulled back, our lot line, we have, when we measure out to twenty-seven, six for the whole garage and carport, we're still under seven feet on the left side.
So on the, the upper left side is still within seven feet?
Does that help?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
See that red line?
Yeah.
And I shot the length of, off the, the block walls, I, I measured those.
Okay.
So I got the lot line right where the walls are.
Is it, does the house kind of sit at an angle from the?
It's a little bit because it's all, there's no line that is actually that they measure on. Even the front's off a little bit.
So Chair, at that, at that corner where you're closest that you're, with your.
Right, we're going to be at least seven feet.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, sir. This, let me just go back a little bit, so it's, it's a little hard to read, but this is the floor plan. So again, the, what would be the carport and the new garage would be a little bit larger than what's there today. Give a little bit more space to the arm. This is a front elevation, so all the building materials will match the home. And then as the applicant mentioned, if you, if you look at the blue line above the red arrow, that's where the garage face would project out towards the cul-de-sac. And then if you look to the right, the living area there, the both front planes of the structure would match more or less.
That makes the center more of a courtyard.
In conclusion, in our recommendation, we feel like everything matches and times enroll nicely. Anytime we get a honor that wants to convert, say, a carport into additional space or enclosed, we feel like that's a good positive investment to the neighborhood. We do recommend approval of the application, subject to these exhibits provided by the applicant.
Thank you. Have we just had anything else to Mr. Frank's presentation?
No, I'm fine unless you have other question.
And as I said, did the roof line so much to the other, the other side, so that was.
That's kind of, we're going to match all the pitches and everything will be identical. I was there from date one.
Any questions, Brian?
No, I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we approve the application based off of the staff's recommendation and that the items are approved based off the exhibits as well.
Thank you.
I'll second.
If you have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Next up, residential request for new pergola located at nine fifty East Libra Circle.
Yes, thank you Chair, Board Members. So this is another improvement request. This is again another backyard improvement with new pergola. The site of us, the Camelback Park, the city home park to the north. So you can see Camelback Road to the north. Dyce Art Road just to the east, so we're south of the southwest corner. And you can see parts of Wiglong, of course, off to the west of Village O'Wayva. Here's an aerial photo, so it's a corner lot, cul-de-sac. There's some commercial that you've seen, prior D R B applications, East Dyce Art, just a few blocks ago. This is a front elevation of the home. This is the site plan. The pergola itself is a shaded area in the northeast corner of the lot. This is a, some architectural details of the pergola itself. And I apologize if that we had some background on the zonium, but it's, it does comply with zonium. We feel like with the design, it ties in with the stone block and architecture of the home. With that, staff will recommend approval of the application, so the exhibits provided by the applicant.
That you said two hundred eighty-eight square feet.
Yes.
And then the color, you get a color on the? Color on the materials?
Yeah, I'll look further to the applicant.
Would you come up and?
I don't know what color it is. It's aluminum.
Yeah, but like in general, it's more match the home?
Yes, we'll tie it in. We, we, I'm sorry, I didn't know that I was coming here.
Could you give your name?
My name is Roy Rodd, number of master Azizes. So, a little on this. Let's see, did we call out the color on this?
So the smoke, the block would be painted to match the home?
Yes.
And then the, the aluminum, aluminum wood would be?
Probably match the trim, but so I don't know.
Is it a dark brown?
I think it's a dark brown. I think that's what we're wanting, is a dark brown.
Chair, if I could, Matt, continue to point it out on, on the upper right hand side.
Oh, this?
It, it does say colored brown.
Brown.
There you go. So it is a dark brown.
Any questions for staff or the applicant? Brian? No?
No questions.
Someone has to make a motion?
I move that we approve the request for the new pergola at nine fifty East Libra. The colors if you match existing and as recommended by staff.
No motion. I'll second Captain. If you have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And next up, public facilities request for church expansion located at three hundred North Old Litchfield Road.
Thank you Chair, Board Members. So this is a very long, fairly established property. It's three hundred North Old Litchfield Road, it's a church at Litchfield Park. The, the city map's a little washed down, it's in the immediate northwest corner of Old Litchfield Road and what will soon become Village Parkway, I'll talk about that in a minute. So the site itself, a corner lot right across to the west of Wiglong and adjacent to our Wigg Litchfield Square. Here's an aerial photo. You can see the existing site, Wiglong there to the east, Scout Park to the north, Scout Lodge to the northwest. And then the infrastructure is currently going in this part of Litchfield Square. One of my duties, I'm the private manager for, for the city, for the overall Litchfield Square. We've been coordinating this project with our general contractor, Ian Carter. This is the second time we got to see Ken Bar. Today we have a coordination meeting. So everything is working well in terms of access and parking control, things like that, we'll, we'll get on that in a minute. I kind of touched on some of these things. So the site's about three point three acres. It is zoned, P F, public facilities. The church has been at this location for not quite a hundred years, but way back to nineteen thirty-nine. The board adjustment, you might remember last fall before I showed up, approved the variance for zero lot line development. That's kind of the theme and the development pattern in Litchfield Square. A lot of the other buildings that will be coming in in the future, development of Litchfield Square will be more of a zero lot line, kind of a walkable, urban setting. See if I pronounced it right, the Zeiss versus Hall.
Zeiss.
What is it? Okay, thank you. I have to work on my Polish or, I don't know, it's German, Russian. Pretty substantial expansions, really nice enhancements to the existing buildings. So we're looking at about seventeen hundred and fifty square foot building addition. A lot of the area now is used as offices for the church. And this project will expand the office area and also provide space for the church operations and for store. And so that will be accommodated as part of the project. So the request tonight is for D R B approval. The architectural style really preserves the integrity of the existing appearance of the church. It's got that old Litchfield Park look. Matching materials will be used for the interior. The cornice cap, windows, window sills, lighting, columns, arches will all follow the established theme of the campus. Some site details taken off the site plan, so the lot coverage will increase likely from about fourteen point seven percent to almost sixteen percent. The total lot area, like I said, is about three point three acres, square feet is one hundred forty-six thousand. The overall buildings on the campus are about twenty-one thousand square feet. And with the addition of seventeen hundred and fifty square feet, it's about twenty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-two square feet. I think most of us are familiar, this is the look from, this is facing the east, I'm sorry, west, so this is the east facade. The roadway in front of the photo is the old Litchfield Road and then Litchfield Square is off to the left, south. Little hard to read, so I'm going to toggle back and forth. This is the demolition site plan. Cottonwood Street is actually going to become Village Parkway when the street's done. So I'll toggle back and forth. This, this exhibit shows it a little bit better in terms of what's happening today versus what will be improved in the future. And there's some other exhibits we'll show you in a second. You can see there's a more pronounced, a sense of arrival, if you will, on Old Litchfield Road with the planned improvements. The zero lot line setback, you can see really on this exhibit, so the south side end will be pretty much the zero lot line. This is a rendering look facing northwest. So Old Litchfield Road to the, to the right, so this shows the proposed improvements. This is the revamped front elevation. I'll toggle back to, if you look at closely, can roughly figure out how wide the building is. And then if you look at this, it's, the architectural design is adding arches. And then a more pronounced entry feature with the pony mall. And then there's ADA accessible ramp that does not exist today. It's, it's more pronounced with this plan. You can see it there on the right. This shows that it's been managed. And I'll just kind of go back and forth. If you, you can see the ramp.
The existing main facade is staying as is, you're just kind of, it just shows a little bit back of that.
Yeah, steps, steps back, and there, you can see this one. Yeah, you can see the steps back a little bit. But it keeps the same, keeps the same architectural details and everything, so it looks like you're just part of the, part of the building.
requirement number one is to maintain that.
Yeah, that facade is, is timeless.
Like the other projects tonight, we feel like the design, building, material package is appropriate. Tightened really good with the overall church campus and we're working on approval of the application, subject to these exhibits provided by the applicant.
Thank you. Would you like to speak for the church? Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I can answer any questions, yes.
Do you have anything that, that was something you want to add?
No, we are going to try to match as well as possible the textures, the colors and the schemes of what's existing there. I'll tell John before we start in the, if you Google, if you, if you look for directions on Google, if you look for directions to Litchfield Park, it brings up a picture of them on this church, so we don't miss out at all with this big, this big addition part. Chair, any questions?
Any questions, Brian?
No questions.
No.
I'd like to make a motion though. I'd like to make a motion though, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
Uh, just a comment, I, I think it looks absolutely beautiful, so great job to the architect and just the whole design of it. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the expansion in design with staff's recommendation on approving it along with the exhibits that we're submitting as well.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve for the church expansion located at three hundred North Old Litchfield Road. A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any votes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, I was married to that church. Lost him forty-two years ago. And that's staff report of current events?
Second, this type of staff does not ever report?
Do any board members have any current events to report?
Uh, yeah.
Yep. Okay, question to the chair?
So.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, no problem, thanks you guys.